Good evening. We'll call this meeting August 4th, meeting to order. And this evening, I'll have Mr. Miller give our invocation if you'll please rise.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for bringing us safely here tonight to make decisions that affect all of our children across Brunswick County. Lead, guide, and direct us as we make those decisions. Continue to keep our staff and children safe during this long-deserved summer break, and bring them back rested at the end of the month. Lead, guide, and direct us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. And I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I believe we... Mr. Weaver, for our public address. You're it. Come on down.
I agree with Mr. Miller on the long summer break.
Are you ready for it to be over or not ready for it to be over?
Start soon.
You're ramped up.
I would be glad to, because it works a lot easier when the kids are here too.
But that's not what you're here about, is it?
And like I said, I like talking. And I will preface my remarks with, there's a lot of questions in these remarks, and I understand this is not the question-answer period, but there are questions nonetheless. And my wife sent an email out to all of you all today, and I read it, and I got to looking at it and realized I probably can't say much better than she did, so I'm gonna plagiarize a lot of what she said. I haven't told her I'm doing that, but I'll tell her when I get home. She writes, and this is, it says "I," but I completely wholeheartedly agree with what she says. You know, I understand there's a need for the program like this. We want these children to get help. We want to be clear about that. There's all kinds of valid points that we could address, funding, whether it's the school's just responsibility, but that's not what we want to talk about. We all want these children to get help. I don't think any of the parents that have stood up and have questions and concerns about this disagree with that. I can see where helping them with their issues is not only a way to live a better life, but will also help the classrooms to run more smoothly. But there are some questions. And what is the success rate for this program? And I know that Dr. Meadows had talked about that this company has run programs in some other schools, and I guess a question is, you know, what kind of success rates are they having with these programs that they do? Is there an expectation that these children are able to leave this program before they finish elementary school? Or is it something where they continue into this program year after year? You know, it seems that the kids that need this kind of help that are at this level, it's gonna be something more than just that basic six-month initial that I know that you talked about. It seems like this is gonna be a long-term thing. And if that's the case, then what happens to the other children who need access to this program but aren't able to if these kids continue to stay into that program? The next question that she and I know a lot of other parents and I have is, how is the transition process gonna work? How long is it expected to take? Can anyone say that as the students transition, will the aide stay with the student the entire time, or are they gonna go for the first day or two of a transition into a classroom and then leave the student unassisted to see if they can handle it? Because it seems that, and I might have misheard some things, but it seems like we've gotten some conflicting information about there will always be an aide with the student when they're transitioning, but then we heard a question about if you did use a school such as BCA campus, well, that wouldn't work because the aide would still be needed back in the classroom. So that kind of brought up our thing of, you know, if the aide is still needed back in the classroom, is that aide gonna be with that student full-time, or are they gonna be kind of floating back and forth, leaving that student unattended in these other classrooms to transition? And jumping down a little bit, I'm sure everybody saw there was an interview a couple weeks ago on WHCT where Dr. Meadows made the comment that the children in this program need to be in an academic setting where they can experience all of their triggers, and that removing them from that academic setting removes the triggers. And it says to us that this program will put staff and students in the position where those staff and students are gonna be these triggers for the children in the day treatment program. So you kind of understand from our point of view, it makes it seem like those children are, for lack of a better term, this whole program is a guinea pig there. And, you know, I understand that there's something that can be a trigger for any kid at a time, but concentrating these kids into one school because, be quite frankly, the way we've heard it and really what it seems like, we can talk about, you know, the transition plan will be individually tailored for each student, but it really sounds like it's more going towards these kids are going to transition at Bolivia, because that's where the program is, that's where these aides are, and that's gonna be the most convenient. And I don't really think that's the right thing to do. I understand the argument of these kids are in the school system now. They are. They are dispersed throughout the school system. But now we're talking about taking them and putting them into one location where these kids will then be transitioned into classrooms at Bolivia. And it seems like there would be a lot more support at these children's home schools. And we just simply worry that by the proximity of the program being housed at Bolivia, that's gonna be the most convenient option to transition them is that Bolivia, versus if it was at a other location, there would be more thought and more discussion into more dispersed options for these kids to transition. And lastly, there are those people who have been, you know, in support of this program from the get-go, those who've not questioned it but supported it and pushed it along in every step of the way. And in some ways, they've been portrayed as heroes. They're viewed as people who are taking a stand for their children, and, you know, a lot of people have turned their backs on these children. And while those of us who have asked questions or voiced concern about this place, about the program being run and run correctly, have been shamed or somewhat treated as ignorant. Mental health is a scary and mysterious thing, especially those who don't know anything about it. And there are a whole lot of unanswered questions about this program. But there's one fact that tends to get overlooked. The people, including us, who are voicing our concerns and asking questions, we're doing it because we're looking out for the best interest of our children. Just because we voice a concern or don't agree with an aspect of the program, it doesn't mean that we don't want these children to get help. Nothing can be further from the truth. We want this program, if it goes forward, to be run successfully, just as I would assume that the parents who have kids who might be candidates for this program would also have a vested interest in this being run properly. I'm not really speaking as much to y'all. I wish there was more people to hear, but I know I'm about out of time. But I will say that, you know, it's distressing when we've heard comments from other parents directed at people who have spoken here, mumbling that, you know, "We don't understand," and that Bolivia is too good for this program. We've heard grumbling and grappling from school personnel about it. And it's, you know, it's not true. We have a vested interest in this just like they do. And with that, I will stop talking.
Mr. Weaver, you've asked a lot of questions here. I'm thinking that the best venue probably is when we have our curriculum committee meeting.
Please make dollars.
And what date is that? That we would have a chance for all of us to be able to talk back and forth about that.
I understand.
And we could probably answer your questions a lot better than we can in this setting right here, but they're valid questions.
Find out what committee it's gonna be heard in.
I know, 'cause you've been to all of them.
I've been to a few of them.
And I think, and I'm just, I'm speaking maybe not for Dr. Meadows, I hope not out of line, but a lot of the questions that are being asked, we're not gonna know until we get there. I mean, it's just like any child, any child with an IEP or an individual education program in any of our schools, they all got triggers, like you said. Every child in this, every child in this county has got a trigger. You may never know if that child has a trigger till one day they do something off the wall and go out and shoot somebody. These kids, we already know have triggers. So we're trying to do the best we can for these kids, knowing they already have triggers, and trying to get the most specialized, and it is our responsibility, we have a right and a responsibility to give every child an education in this county that needs one. Whatever, you know, and I'm not, I'm not trying to argue, I'm just saying, a lot of the questions, in my mind, are not gonna be answered. We're not gonna know how long it's gonna take one child to transition. We're not gonna know how long they're gonna be there. They might be there for five years if they start in kindergarten. They might be there for, I don't know. I know with each of my individual children, each year, we have different things that we have to deal with, and we're not gonna know. Not that we don't want to answer the questions, but a lot of them, I just, I don't know if we can answer all of them until, you know, like I say, it's still on the block. It's not, we're still going through the process of trying to...
I understand. I know that last I checked, the memorandum hadn't come back.
Right.
If I'm correct on that.
We're still working on it.
Our concern is just that, you know, it's gonna be simply, they're at Bolivia, it's just easier to transition everybody there at Bolivia. And, you know, not just my opinion. I've talked to other administrators and people that I feel have knowledge in this, and they kind of agree that there would be, you know, if a student comes from their home school, it seems like that would be a much more familiar place, a lot more support system at their home school where they came from. Maybe not always, because everybody's backstory is different, and I understand that. But, you know, as a rule, it seems there would be a lot more support for these kids to transition back into a traditional classroom at their home school.
There was some discussion about it during this, all of these discussions, about the children doing that at one time. It's my thoughts on it, or my information given to me, that these children will have, how many teachers or aides will be for each child?
The ratio has to be, there will be a teacher for each six students, plus a qualified professional from mental health services. And once we reach 18 students in the program, we have to add another qualified professional for each six kids. So it could be a one-to-three ratio, teacher per, or adult to students, up to one-to-two ratio.
And I do know that whoever the aide is will be trained in that kind of work and won't be going back to another classroom.
Right.
And they have to be there by law. They have to be, we have to have so many students.
Well, Dr. Meadows...
So be it helpers for students.
My understanding is that the reason that we are considering consolidating kids from all over the county is that we simply couldn't afford to have the professional expertise in each school that we'll be able to provide in addition to the classroom teacher, because that's what this is all about, is getting professional assistance.
That's correct. The requirements by the state for a day treatment center is that each facility must have a director on site. And so if we had it at different locations, there would happen, the mental health agency would have to fund a director at each site, along with the qualified professional, who is like a counselor, who is a counselor or has some sort of counseling license. And so the mental health agency would not be able to afford having it at multiple sites at each, you know, regionally or each of our elementary schools unless the population became, you know, we had 50 or 60 kids in a day treatment program on a regular basis, which, my goodness, I hope we don't get to that point. But right now, with the numbers that we're talking about, it would not suffice for a mental health agency to be able to accommodate that many sites.
I think we all agree that if at all possible, and we had the number of students to support it, we'd probably prefer to have multiple locations, just simply to help with the cost of transportation, if nothing else.
Absolutely.
But to allow students to be in their home district, if at all possible, because, you know, spending an hour on a bus is not pleasant for anybody. Talk about triggers.
That's right.
That's...
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Are we gonna lose any employees once we pull, if it does go to a central location?
No.
Individual schools?
No. There's not enough of them coming out of individual schools for that to happen. And we were funding the teachers out of Title I dollars as, instead of pulling those teachers from the individual schools out of their allocations. But there wouldn't be enough from each school, because there's, basically, there's 10 elementary schools. We said the maximum would be 24. You're talking two and a half kids per school would not make enough of a change in the allocation at the individual schools to pull a staff member.
Thank you.
I would like to address one question he mentioned about home school. Maybe you could answer it better than I can, but I know that if you have a child at home, they're not gonna be in, they're not, what we're trying to do is help them learn how to interact with other children and then...
Yeah, and let me make sure that I understand what he means by home school. Is there the school that they were sent from?
Correct.
Not necessarily schooling at home.
Like where they should...
The what? Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
Like their designated school where they should...
Oh, okay. Okay.
Where they live as far as...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what, I'm pretty sure that's what you referred to.
All right.
Well, do you have, and you might have answered this before, but do you, in other programs, do you have numbers that tell you whether they've been successful or not in other programs in other places, or...
I can tell whether or not students have gone back to their original schools and have found success. We can get numbers like that. In terms of measuring success, there are multiple ways, I guess, that the mental health service provider would measure that success, whether it's from the behaviors, it could be through the amount of service that they have to have from mental health when they returned out of the day treatment program, whether they have been moved to a higher level, or whether they dropped back to a lower level on the continuum. So there's a different, there are different ways of measuring that success, so I would have to see how that occurs. I have, we have seen some information that says that it is better for them to be able to transition with a mental health person close proximity versus being sent back to a school without a mental health person being available. And so that's kind of what we were talking about when we said that they could transition to a classroom in Bolivia with a mental health person, and that if they were at, what Mr. Weaver was referring to, when they were at BCA, they would actually have to go back to their home school, their original school, and if we sent a mental health person there, that mental health person would not be available at BCA. But the transitioning would not be, would be on a gradual process, so they may only transition out for 30 minutes in a day, versus just going completely all day long and being transitioned at such a large amount of time. When we have, for example, we have exceptional children in our schools, and they're on a modified day. They only come to school for a couple of hours. When we work through a transition with those students, we bring them back on a very short interval process. So we may add 30 minutes or an hour to their day to bring them back and try to get them settled in and make sure that time works. But instead of going from, "Oh, you come two hours a day, now you're gonna come all day." Those smaller intervals of transitioning allows us to make sure that the transition works well. And that's really what we want to be able to do with these students.
Do you have these children's names now, or you have some of them now, or do you have some after-school starts, or how does that work?
We have, right now, we currently have 18 students who actually would qualify for the program based on what mental health services is indicating. They have actually been either recommended already for a day treatment program, or they, that is their next step, is to be placed in a day treatment program.
And the students will be, they will not be on the playground with other children? They won't be in the cafeteria? Is that true?
While they're actually assigned to the day treatment program for that, you know, the initial placement while they're being, while they're working with the mental health provider, they would not. They would be with the students that are in the day treatment program. Ultimately, the goal is for them to be able to be with their peer groups. That is our obligation under federal law, is to do that, is what's called the least restrictive environment. So we have to really work to try to make them a part of their peer group again. So ultimately, that is our goal, but there would be a time that they would not be with other students besides those who are in the day treatment program.
Well, we'll move on to the approval of the meeting agenda.
I'm sure enough motion that we're approved to meet and the agenda is presented.
All right. Mr. Thorson's a motion.
Is it forward-based, the regular and the HR finance? Oh, I'm ahead of you. Minute, just a minute.
There's no additions or deletions on...
I'll second, Chair.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. For consent items, we have a list of consent items that have been...
Just a minute.
I'm sorry.
I missed you.
That's okay. We have approval of the minutes for July 7th, regular meeting, and July 21st, HR finance meeting. Got a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion for the approval of the minutes.
For July 7th, regular meeting, and July 21st, HR finance meeting.
Second. Mr. Thompson, Mr. Miller, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now for consent items.
I'm going to approve the consent items on the agenda.
All right. Question by Ms. Babson, second. Mr. Thorson. All in favor of proof for the consent items? Any opposed? All right. And actions for approval, we have action items of policies 6430 and 7340.
It's on the tab four.
These were discussed in committee meetings, if anybody has any.
Was there a reason why that was put under action? Was there a question about it, or you just wanted other board members to be aware of it?
I think we just wanted them to be aware of it.
Yeah, 'cause I didn't see anything that stood out in my mind. Is there anything in particular that we should be aware of?
No, sir. It's just, there's some deletions of the previous one, particularly on page two at the top of awarding will be made to the lowest responsive or responsible bidder. And then it moves down to how the awards will take place, which would give the opportunity for us to look at quality, performance, and time specified. And I think Mr. Thompson has made these comments in the past, that those are items that we need to look at as we move through our building processes.
Well, the best argument I can think of for pre-qualification of bidders, that process allows you to make those kinds of inquiries.
That's the only real change to the policy.
If I'm not mistaken, would this reflect a change at the general assembly?
With that, I make a motion to approve policy 6430, state purchasing requirement says presented. And is that a first reading, or wait the second reading, or is that just the first reading?
Did it actually approve, it was a deletion of a paragraph that had been just...
Just on page two?
Just on page two.
Yeah, I saw that. And I make a motion with set 34, 6430.
Have a minute.
Have a minute. Yes.
And I'll second.
All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Policy number 7340. I guess Ms. Smith could speak there, or I could speak to it. This was employee dress and appearance, and we would just, we went back and looked at some other counties and added a little more information about what would be permitted as far as school dress, which it just kind of, I guess, page two just kind of adds a little more information, just like the student dress. So I'll let you address it if you want to. She's showing her appropriate attire while she addresses us.
Thank you very much.
Her professional business attire.
Thought about this as I was getting dressed this morning. So we really were just reviewing several different systems policies, and Ms. Cook is correct. We added language that really kind of brought it into more of the positive. We really believe that our staff should present in a professional manner, and of course, they do. But instead of saying all the don'ts, it's really kind of shifting the language to be more of the positives. So you'll see that we have made some recommendations. Ms. Bear, if you'll scroll down for me. So the statement really begins with, "The following clothing is considered acceptable in the projection of the professional image expected by the board during regular school hours." And I think that you will see the change, the significant change is number five. Shorts are only permitted for employees involved in athletic or physical education instruction, and only in the immediate area where the instruction is conducted. The employee will be required to change into other approved apparel when departing that area. That is one of the deviations from the existing...
If I could, just real quickly, it seems like to me that the definition of shorts has changed in the last decade. I haven't seen a pair of shorts in a long time.
How about Bermuda shorts? Except Bermuda shorts would be acceptable.
I'm wondering, it seems like to me that there's a three-quarter length that's almost a stylistic thing. Are they really shorts, or are they just short pants?
Well, it's hard for me to editorialize on that. The person who uses words for a living to be without words.
Ida?
Touche.
But I think the idea is that shorts that are utilized in physical education programs by instructors in those programs should be limited to the area that they're doing the instruction, and should not be for other parts of the building.
This is employee dress, not student dress.
Yeah, I'm thinking of teachers that teach gym classes and then teach something else.
And that's spelled out in here. That is one of the areas.
That is correct. So that is a deviation, because currently there is no moratorium on changing in a dip to a different, when you go to a different area of the building. So that is, that is the one change. All of the other ones really are pulled directly out of our existing language. They're just worded in the positive. And if you will scroll down further, this is sort of where we reiterate the inappropriate, which is already in. But the addition is number one. When we had policy committee, there were two principals in attendance at the policy committee meeting, and this was a discussion point about denim. And so it led us to put into the draft for your consideration, all denim jeans, shorts, skirts, and squirts. That's something I've not seen in a while. Note, special dress days may be designated by the superintendent or principal where denim jeans, shorts, skirts, and squirts may be worn. So we utilize, you know, principals do, a skirt is a pair of shorts with a little covering over the front that makes it look like a skirt, so it's skirts and shorts merged. Hence, haven't seen those for about 20 years.
You use those in slogging?
No.
A lot of tennis players wear squirts.
Tennis players do wear squirts. That is correct. So we, the discussion was, is denim appropriate as a professional, is denim appropriate professional attire? And so that's what we bring for your consideration. The principals who were in attendance at the policy committee did support this addition to the policy.
Well, if you recall last, well, this past teacher appreciation week...
Yes.
The superintendent allowed the staff to wear jeans, which I thought was very morale booster.
It was. It was, Mr. Thorson.
And the schools I visited, it was. It was...
It absolutely was. And so I think that, again, with the consideration that the superintendent or principal at the school can designate special days, it really is used as a fundraising tool for Relay for Life, for United Way, and then for morale, like Mr. Tubb did through our staff appreciation last year. So that's really the piece that we're talking about there. I think there should have been an addendum to number three, where instead of bare shoulders, it should have been amended to read spaghetti straps. That's an update that somehow did not make this, so...
Well, probably ought to be both, don't you think?
Well, we had not discussed it, Ms. Babson, at policy, so it's certainly something we can discuss now, but I think our conversation was more along the lines of spaghetti straps. So we can certainly, it's the board's pleasure as to what the language is, but it was our intention to bring it to you, reading spaghetti straps. Other than that, there really are no significant substantive changes. Those two were the big ones. No denim, unless designated by the principal or superintendent, and putting on different attire than shorts when leaving...
I have nothing to say about spaghetti straps.
It's probably wise, Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, probably is.
So, any questions?
Exactly.
Any other questions about...
No.
With that, I...
We'd like to, at least, clarify a little bit, and also puts it into the positive, which is where, which is one of the main things that we're pushing this year, is celebrating what is right in our schools, and trying to eliminate talking about negative, but talk about positive. talk about positive, and then writing this particular, or rewriting this particular positive in a positive manner versus you can't do, you don't have to, you're not allowed to.
This is the administrative version of PBI.
That's correct.
That's exactly what it is.
Thank you for recognizing that, Mr. Thompson. That's outstanding. Yes, sir. That's exactly what it is.
Even if mine's.
Where we'll find an acronym.
You might say what PBI is, or whatever. We know what.
Positive Behavioral Intervention.
Okay.
Support.
And support.
And support.
Yeah, I would have gotten the last.
Well, I'm just thinking about the people who look at this on TV, that when we start using acronyms, sometimes it, sometimes it doesn't make any sense to me.
Basically, we've been asking our teachers and our students to endorse and to practice being more positive, and I think it's a good thing to apply that same standard administratively.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just first reading, right?
Is this first reading?
It's amendment.
Or just amendment?
In consideration, because we are starting school in a couple of weeks, we wanted to be able to clarify, and we would not have had another opportunity to approve it prior to the return of staff.
I make a motion, we approve Policy seven-three forty.
As a minute.
As a minute, as written.
A fix there somewhere, what was it you said you needed to change?
We add some.
Bare shoulder.
Spaghetti straps.
Aye.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor with changes?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We're going to do again.
And number two, student and staff celebrations and salutes.
All right, this is one that I would like to discuss with you, and I've handed you a single page that kind of outlines what we, the staff, have talked about, and hope that you will consider looking at, and if approving, or at least modifying. You know, when we come in here, every board meeting, and we have our board salute, and we stand around this podium, and I have to speak over the top of it, and we don't have room for parents to really come up to the front with their student, their child. And then when we have a meeting which may have a lot of information in it where other people are here, and we get, we cross the lines between the board meeting and the salutes, and the salute is part of the board meeting. What we would like to say, and to do, and to ask you to approve, is that a couple of times a year, let's really celebrate what's really going right in our schools. And our motto for this year, and we were, we spent the day with the principals and the assistant principal, and we led it off for the first couple of hours, talking about what's right in Brunswick County schools. And it goes back to the previous comment about what Ms. Swinski was talking about, and talking in the positive. We would like to take the time in front of the board meeting, go to down to our, where we were today at Stone Chimney with the Realtors Hall down there, and have a real celebration. Maybe have pizza, maybe have just a reception, but this would be in front of or before the actual board meeting. There would be room for parents, there would be room for friends, there would be room for other members of their family, instead of a crowded situation where we push them through. We would like to make it a real celebration. And it may be that we, that two times a year is not enough, maybe it's three or four times a year, every nine weeks or something like that. We have looked at Stone Chimney and have been able to, in preparation for this discussion, to at least lock in some dates that we could do it. But we would really like to have, remember the last one, when we had sixty or seventy kids here, students, and we had parents lining the wall, and really did not have time to take time with those parents, speak to those parents, really talk about, celebrate what those students had accomplished during the school year. This would enable us to do that. It would enable you and I, and the staff, the teachers, the principals who were there, to mingle with those folks at the same time. We can still do the salute piece as a formal part of that celebration, but it would really give us a chance to celebrate who our kids are, and what they're doing, and what's right in Brunswick County schools. And again, it's rebranding who we are, it's telling the public that we would like for you to be part of us. We would announce that that's what's going to happen. And then after the celebration, then we could have the board meeting at Stone Chimney, and move into the business part of the board meeting. And you see that there are several dates in here, first semester, second semester. What we would like to also do is next board meeting, when we have the Teacher of the Year, and Employees of the Year, is to do that at Stone Chimney also, because then we announce who the Teacher of the Year happens to be, we announce who our Employees of the Year, and we have an opportunity to bring in, they have an opportunity to bring in their families, and make it a celebration, not just a couple of minutes of, here, you know, you're the Teacher of the Year, but spend some time with those people, and really celebrate the accomplishments of those teachers, and our employees, and our students. And that's what we would like to do, and would like to recommend that you talk to us about it, shoot holes in it, and, or accept it, and we'd go on and have a real celebration about who we are.
Well, Madam Chair, I like the idea. I'm just a little skeptical, but two celebrations would be adequate. We have so many exceptional children. I mean, through the course of a year, there's a lot of students that get recognized, so.
If you notice, the last paragraph kind of mentions that, that we even don't know that two would be the correct number.
Right, right.
And it may be that every nine weeks would be the correct number.
Nine weeks. Well, I was actually thinking that at the very least, the board can give you a green light to proceed with the concept.
Okay, sir.
And let the details emerge, as they will.
Let's try and see, and go from there.
You'll have an idea of how many kids would be receiving something each month as we go through.
At each meeting, we would know how many kids, and the parents, we would send the invitation to parents.
And it may turn out that you do it by, well, for example, an arts session, or a science, or math session.
Very, you're right. And if you know, most of our sciences and most of our arts come in at the same times.
Right. But those kinds of, I guess, refinements, I think y'all just need some indication from the board, whether or not we'd be amenable to doing something like that. I certainly would be. I think it would be much more comfortable for the students and the parents.
Remember, you and I, and a couple of board members, and Ms. Cook, you were at the celebration that we had over at Thalian Hall, where we had the.
North Brunswick.
The North Brunswick Chamber, and we had the orchestra, the three or four young guys from North High playing orchestra music. That's the concept, except we expand it to our whole county, and to do like we did there, and to pay the correct amount of celebration, to salute them in a little bit better way than, this is a chamber for business. It's a tough one to do, real celebrating, when you're kind of lock stepped into chairs, and we would have tables set up over at Stone Chimney, where we could have the families sitting, like we did with the North Chamber, and use that as a model, but expand it to cover our whole county.
Pizza, we'd probably have much better attendance.
That would be right. But we really do think that this will work, and you're right. We've got some details to go through, but the concept.
I like having an informal part, but I still want a formal part, and I think you would mention that, is when we actually give them their.
Yes, ma'am. There would have to be, just like at the North Chamber. There is the informal, with people standing around talking, they have a meal in that case, but then there is the formal part of handing out the actual salute, handing out the piece of paper, handing out the plaque, handing out, you know, the cup, the state champions win, or whatever. That would have to be part of it, too. But this would, it would add a lot of class to what we're doing, and it would add a lot of celebrating who our students are, and it would also enable us to talk about what is right in Brunswick County schools, and to prove that we have a lot going on that is right in Brunswick County schools. We have a lot of great things going on in Brunswick County schools.
Well, I know that there are two organizations, the NCAE and CIS, and CIS usually sponsors the Superintendent of the Year recognition, not, yeah.
Principal of the Year.
Principles, that's what I'm trying to think of. And then the other one was, NCAE did the teachers. I guess I'm asking, I don't want to exclude the community in being a part of this, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, other organizations.
Other organizations at the appropriate time and place would be brought in to do it. But we're really thinking about all of those band students that came up, and those art students that came up, and the track team from North Brunswick, it's won the state championship two years in a row, and those. But there would have to be those other organizations also. We would give them, and would include them in the celebration also.
Yeah, we can always use, what is it, the expression, many hands make light work, so.
Well, another thing, too, that the teachers certainly appreciated, were the gifts that businesses gave them.
Yes, ma'am.
During the time the NCAE was doing it. I wouldn't want to stop that.
Yes, ma'am.
May I add just now?
Sure.
So, we have, over the past couple of years, modified the employee recognition.
Right.
Right.
And the employees, we sought their input on what they really felt like would make them feel celebrated, as far as Teacher of the Year, Assistant of the Year, Principal of the Year. And departmental organizations still have a hand, but the board actually chose three years ago to underwrite our employee recognition program, so that we would know that we could maintain a certain level of support for that. What they had requested really was monetary awards, and that's what we tried to provide them. So, we have also asked, in addition to that, what they would like to see as far as the celebration. Last year, we had a very nice dinner for the employee and their spouse, but the feedback that we received really said that they would really like to bring their whole family, because when they have to hire a babysitter, it really turns into a cost for them for the evening, which is an evening that's supposed to be, you know, to celebrate them. So, it was actually their request to hold their celebration, to kick off our school year, which would actually be our next board meeting, September seventh, at Stone Chimney, and to do the reception ahead of time, let it be floating, very informal and casual, and actually name during your board meeting, their.
Who they are.
So, that's really the employees' voice, asking for, you know, kind of getting their input on what they feel like would be most, make them most celebrated. So, that would be the September second day, that's our next board meeting day, would be at Stone Chimney. And then we have two student celebrations, one in December proposed, and then one in May, so.
Madam Chair.
And we bring all of those supporters together for that community, for the staff. We also have other community sponsors. We have banks, EBT, we have other community sponsors.
We don't want to take any of that away.
Right.
We don't want to take any of that away.
I know. I'm glad we're giving them some financial, you know, gifts, but if businesses and other people, that's helping us.
Yes, ma'am.
If somebody wants to contribute, will you go ahead and do that, Jason, give me a call.
Yeah, I'm just glad the invitations didn't read, please don't bring your children to a school board function. That just wouldn't make sense, would it?
So, we want everybody to come, and they feel like if they were being celebrated, it would be better than happening.
Well, Madam Chair, I'll try to make a motion on this, if you are willing to listen.
All right, I'm willing to listen.
All right. Well, I would like to make the motion that we agree that we would have a separate recognition ceremony at an indeterminate number of events throughout the year, to highlight student success more directly, and to, I guess, direct the administration to perceive the refinements and details.
Okay, sir.
All right.
And that's broadly stated and vague on purpose?
Yes, sir.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Thank you. And we will move on to discussion announcements, board briefs. We have, anybody that wants to share any of the board briefs from the committee meetings that we had last...
Donnie, do you have a question?
Yeah. Just notes real quickly. We're proceeding with the South Brunswick Middle School Athletic Field Remediation. We have been working with an environmental attorney, and their recommendation on the memorandum of agreement with Deener is to proceed. So, we are doing that. We're going to take that step, and then move towards trying to figure out how to pay for any potential liability, which, you know, conceivably could just be greater and greater as time goes on. But right now, the good news is, is that all the recent testing indicates that all the heavy metals that have been previously been of such concern, the samples have indicated lower, lower levels than previously have been measured, and they fall out of the range of toxicity, as it were. I mean, you know, where you have to be concerned with it. So, it's in normal, natural occurring levels, so that's really good news. I don't know how long it's stayed that long. Those are groundwater testing, by the way. There was great news from Mr. Taylor regarding our drive-up incentive program, that has been really a success, and I think we're going to want to proceed with the same program this year. I can't remember the, all of the numbers.
Yes, sir.
It was really a morale booster as well.
Decreased by thirty-six point eight-nine percent.
Yeah, almost forty percent. That's really important. And then we had updates on, I think, let's see, North Brunswick and Waukamaw, and it seems like the roofing as well. We did have some roofing updates, and we clarified that we want to make sure that all roofing is being addressed, not just the flat roofing, but all the metal roofs as well. And I think right now, we don't have, currently have a contract for some of those repairs, and that's being attended to. Mr. Thorson and I were at Cedar Grove, a new school, and we saw rainwater collected in the ceiling of the corridors, in the light fixtures, and that's the brand-new roofs essentially. So, we wanted to highlight that again. But Waukamaw, the site work there, they're going to be ready for a school start. There'll be a new entry to that school. They'll be out of sorts for at least a year, but everybody seems to be quite willing to put up with the inconvenience of difference. So, that's proceeding. And North Brunswick, of course, is proceeding as well. I haven't been by in the last couple of weeks, but I think they've got a lot of foundation work done, and we should start seeing things above ground pretty quickly, steel, and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Plane it. Lane at Virginia Whiston's coming along. Matter of fact, they paid part of it this week. Uh, can't answer that, Mr.?
South, aye. Parking lot or the road around behind the school?
And just one more quick, Mr. Miller sort of reminded me. I don't think we should ever miss the opportunity to let people know that in the background, a lot of work is taking place, trying to assess the needs of the school system, trying to put together estimates of potential costs and those kinds of things. So, we're doing our homework quietly, trying to grind out numbers so that we can have a number that we could ask the public to support in terms of a bond referent. So, that work is ongoing and continuing and very, very important.
And of course, you left out that the structure that we're building at Waukamaw, that is proceeding and should be on target.
It's on target.
In 2016.
Yeah.
An important part for that community up there.
It's dusty, too, isn't it? New image for that school.
Madam Chairman, operation. I wanted to, and I may ask Jessica's assistance with some of this, but I wanted to go back to the minutes of the Policy Curriculum Committee meeting because we have signed a lot of very important MOUs and I wanted to highlight some of the things that we give our students in this county. We try to look at every student, every group of students and fulfill their needs and make sure that they're successful in their school year, their schoolwork. We've had a nursing program now with, in conjunction with BCC for about, well, it happened before 1990. As a result, we had, I believe, 18 students attend the clinic, attended, attained, excuse me, clinical experience for all of the Brunswick County Nursing Program. I think we've, we've helped students graduate from BCC by having this program. They've gone on to BCC and become graduates and do they have the RN program there, too, now, or is it just the?
Yes, ma'am.
I thought they did.
They do. They have the LPN and RN.
Sometimes these students have their first year of this experience in their classes before they ever get there and sometimes more than that. The development day contracts, under Melissa Quinnlin, we have a for kids only development day center, child development, and we work with these committees, Child Development Center Incorporated and Easter Seals. These schools, Brunswick County Schools have partnered with these three entities to provide educational and related services for identified preschool-aged students in order to meet compliance with the public law. Currently, each center serves a portion of our exceptional children, pre-kindergarten population, and we approved the contract for that. The next is Speech Solutions Contract for those, those children who need help with their speech. Brunswick County has partnered with Speech Solutions Incorporated to provide speech-language services to identify students with disabilities. Speech-language services are provided to enable identified students the opportunity to access, to access the least restrictive environment in order to meet compliance with public law. Individual with Disabilities Education Improvement Act, under this act. By contracting with Speech Solutions, Brunswick County Schools can meet the requirements and provide the quality education for these students who are identified as needing speech-language services. The next one is the Maxim Nursing Contract. This contract is with Maxim Health Care Service Incorporated and provides health care support to identified students with disabilities that exhibit a medically fragile condition. Nursing services are provided to enable identified medically fragile students the opportunity to access the least restrictive environment, environment in order to meet compliance with public law. Now, I'm going to give the law. Individuals with disabilities and, and with disabilities, education improvement. By contracting with Maxim Health Services, Brunswick County Schools can meet requirements and provide quality education for students who are identified as being medically fragile and in need of nursing support in order to attend school. Then we have Coastal Horizons. This group provides individual and group counseling services to identified students with or without disabilities that exhibit emotional behavior indicators and that's some of the things we've been talking about as far as, as school setting within itself for some of these students, too. But they provide services in every school in the school system. Counseling services are provided to enable identified students the opportunity to improve educational outcomes and provide a quality education for these students who are identified as needing counseling in order to access the educational environment. There are many others that we, that we went through, but I just wanted the public as a whole to know that we try to, the law says we have to do a lot of it, but, but we try to make sure that every group of students or every student has the best education that we can afford them.
I would even say that sometimes we can afford, we still have to do it.
By law.
By law. But I do think you bring, bring up an excellent point that, you know, as Brunswick County Schools, I think we currently have, is it approximately 1,800 employees?
Little over 1,800.
Little over 1,800. But the support staff that supports our teachers and the classroom and administration, we subcontracted out a great deal of services and so there's a large number of people involved in that secondary or tertiary level of, for student support services. And sometimes we, we don't really recognize that, but that number can be quite large.
We would be over 2,000 if you can add in all of those people in.
There are other entities that we work with. These are just some of the ones that we addressed at the last curriculum committee meeting.
All right, thank you. And day center update, any kind of update that we have?
Point of not being able to bring an MOA tonight, sorry. But we have, we're working really closely with the Mental Health Agency, the Alexander Youth Network, on trying to get the transportation funded through Medicaid. They actually have that in place with another, in another school district in Cleveland County where Medicaid funds the transportation for students who qualify for Medicaid. They do that through their social services department. So, the actual mental health agency works with social services and then social services gets the funding through Medicaid. They are trying to work that out in our district as well to see if we can't pay for some of the transportation through a reimbursement from Medicaid. But it's kind of, we're having to work through some bureaucracy, for lack of a better word, to try to make sure that that's going to happen before we bring an actual MOA to the board. And I, I really want to have that answer about transportation before bringing an agreement to the board so that you have a better idea about the exact cost that it would bring to our district.
Is that a delayed payment? Is that, would that be immediate or retroback or would it have to wait a year to get reimbursed for that? Do you know?
My understanding that it is, it's probably not immediate like that day, but I would say probably 30- to 60-day time period, but it is not a year, you know, waiting a year.
Delayed year, okay.
No.
It's my understanding that the school might not start with the regular school year, that it might be later on in the year.
That's correct. There would not be time for us at this point to start on the very first day of the school year. And we, we didn't, when we first brought the idea up in, back in February, we were hoping to be able to start at the beginning of the school year, at least with a few students. But as we've progressed and we've talked with the Mental Health Agency, there is a time period that it takes to get a student approved and to work through that mental health process. So, you know, it'll be a gradual enrollment of students into the program. So, even when we get the doors open, it will be, it would be, you know, a couple of students, adding a couple of students to actually work through that process with the Mental Health Agency, with, it's now Trillium instead of Coastal Care, which is the Medicaid provider or the Medicaid Oversight Agency. And so, we would have to work through them as well. So, it's a process and, you know, working through each of our schools because there is going to be a district team that will work to determine whether the students will be able to go to the day treatment program along with the Mental Health Agency, you know, having that oversight because they have, it has to be approved through Medicaid and through the Mental Health Agency. And then also having that time to develop that plan of how the student will transition into the day treatment program and how the student will transition out of the day treatment program. So, they won't go in there unless they have a plan for entering and exit, exiting the day treatment program.
You have previously told us that this was not a normal classroom setting for these students, that you would expect that a school of this capacity would serve more than 20 students per year, simply because most of the students will be there on a short duration, relatively short duration, with some exceptions depending upon need.
That's correct. It's different, it'll be different time lengths for each student. Some could be there for three, six, nine months, the entire school year, maybe progress to the next school year. It will just depend. It also runs over the summer, not the actual academic part of it, but the students will have to continue if they're, for example, if they are assigned to the day treatment program for three months and it's April, they would go in and stay for the three months even though it runs past the school year. They would continue to get their mental health services during the summer on the site. So, it's a, it's a continuous program of trying to work with the students.
Well, how would the personnel work with that? Would you start out with the amount, the number of people you said or just a number of people to serve 10 children, for instance?
Right.
And then bring other people in later as it gets larger or how does that work?
Yeah, that's what, when we talked and met about it just a couple of weeks ago, we talked about having, bringing in a couple of teachers to start with. We actually already have an exceptional children's teacher who was an excellent intern for us this last year that worked in one of our structured behavior support classrooms and we put her under contract. She can go into another EC classroom, we have openings, but our intent was for her to work at the day treatment program if we were able to get it funded and, and get it in place. So, we would have an exceptional children's teacher who is certified to teach all subject areas in elementary school until we can get other teachers hired. We would hire regular ed teachers as, as the students were enrolled in the program. So, my hope is to bring an MOA soon and I know that I keep saying that and I'm sorry for that, but I really do want to bring it to you when I have a good plan for the, the cost of the program.
And if you remember, the, the transportation cost is over 200,000, right at $200,000.
Is there a time for the MOA that we say we won't do it this year? I mean, is there a month that we get to say it's just not going to work and let's wait till next year?
Well, I think probably if we get to a point, you know, if it became October, November, we would probably then work at developing the MOA for next school year.
Next semester, but next school year.
Yeah, I think there would be a point, yeah.
So, if the MOA kept dragging on and you don't get an answer on the transportation piece, it could go through October and then we'd just say, that's next.
We would continue to work on that process behind the scenes, but we would not actually get some approval until we actually could have it start because starting in April or something like, would, would not really be, would not be sensible to me. So, we would probably need to hold off and then start in the summer or at the beginning of next school year.
Going back to the transportation part of it, is that 100% or is that just, they could say 25, 30, 50%?
Well.
If they pay, it would be 100%?
Well, what we've asked for in our request in the MOA when we sent it back to them was for them to fund students who are covered by Medicaid. That's the, those are the only students who we can get reimbursement for.
Be 100%?
Wouldn't necessarily be 100%, but it would be a pretty close number to 100%.
Are they being funded now for transportation?
In the students now being, no, no. But in other districts, transportation is being funded through Medicaid to go to a day treatment program.
But it has to be a day treatment program, not a regular homeschool?
That's right. That's right.
We, we do have transportation funding for EC students.
Absolutely.
But that's not what we're really talking about.
And as we talked the other day, a lot of the students that we're talking about are on, already on special transportation. They may currently only come to school part of the day. This is not all of them, but there are some that only come part of the day. So, we actually pay more for their transportation right now than we do for other students, for some of them. I'm not saying that's all of them. So, this may actually help us in some aspects because we wouldn't transport them in the middle of the day because our expectation is if they go to the day treatment program that they would be in school all day because they would have that mental health service there, working with the students, trying to help them, you know, reach their academic potential at, at that site. So, it might help us in some aspects, may not in others.
Thank you. And then the next thing, we have August committee meetings, August 18th, and District 2 meeting in Onslow County on September 10th, and then the board retreat, which we need to work on scheduling some of it.
Yes, ma'am.
Could we talk about the District 2 meeting just for a minute? I, I think as many board members as can ought to go, simply because there's so many laws being introduced in Raleigh and being talked about and I'm sure that we'll get a lot of good information about that. You and I think we went.
We went to Pender County last year and we're most impressed by the home district, you know, the host district and at some point, we may end up hosting a District 2 meeting as well.
Yeah, we've done that one time before.
It was very useful and beneficial, I think. There were a few adventures that.
There were a few. All right.
The board retreat. We, you and I have talked on numerous occasions about needing a board retreat and wanting to have one. I would like for us to enter in a conversation about when you would like to have it and if you would like for me to try to get the School Board Association or some other organization to, to provide that so that we could start the new year off with some, on the same goals for me, the same goals for the staff and those that, that we can pass down, that we would want to see our principals help our teachers with and our teachers to accomplish.
Well, and in addition to that, I think our school system is faced with any number of challenges that one can point to, not the least of which would be facilities.
The bond piece also, yes, sir.
All of those kinds of challenges are important for us to, to talk about and be aware of and.
Planful.
So, I'm all for it. I'm just not sure whether we should plan on one or a series once again. There are many issues. I think it would be in good practice for us to try to meet quarterly or at least.
I do, too, John. I, I would like for the board to have a day set aside that we can be together in a run and be together with the employees or just ourselves sometime. And as you say, set our goals, make sure that we're all on the same page and that we're working together toward that. And I'd like to do this as soon as possible.
Well, my recent history of where the board has. Well, my recent history of where the Board has had several retreats over the past several years, we've accomplished some significant things during those retreats, and we've made, I think, made it real obvious that they're beneficial for the students and staff in Brunswick County. So, I'm ready, willing, and able for the most part.
All right.
So, do we need to set a date?
That's the next one.
A series of dates.
I see reason. Well, I'm gonna wait for those people that own businesses and have the work. I can mostly work around any date.
That would be Mr. Thorson that you were referring to?
He's working hard on this.
Mr. Thorson, they're on your case again.
No, these two only are the ones I'm thinking about.
What are you talking about doing, in August or September?
I would think at least around the first-
September sometime, sometime in September.
Couple of weeks in September.
Mr. Thorson.
Didn't you say the spots were running pretty soon? You want to avoid that.
We'll just have a big spot.
Get off Mr. Thorson, put a date out there.
The Board Meeting is on September the first.
First, second, third, those are kinda crazy days.
Yeah, we don't need them.
Mr. Green will be tangled up, will be, a couple of us will be tangled up.
Well, the next Monday is Labor Day, so that's a holiday.
Yeah. The district meeting is the tenth.
Well, you're looking at a couple of days in a row consecutive, or you split it up?
I don't know.
You're looking at least two days, right, for Board Retreat?
I would envision that it would take at least that, yes, sir.
I think it would be really tiring to try to cover seven, eight hours, you know.
Like three, from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty or twelve, and then the next day, or skip a day, or something like that, come back.
Keeping in mind that when we're at our retreats, we have staff away from their work, for the most part, you know. I mean, we will certainly want to minimize the impact on them, because they're getting ready for school and the first of the year.
Well, part of it, we can have just the Board and then part of the staff.
Well, I think the superintendent can schedule all that as appropriate. But, we certainly want to be able to get information and exchange ideas with our professional staff.
What do you wanna do, two half-days?
That's at least, the whole day's bound to need that.
Yeah, if we do it the half-day, then that gives us an opportunity to go home and think about what we've done. It also gives you an opportunity with your business, and I know Mr. Miller and his business also.
You know, catch up, yeah.
And it also gives me an opportunity to catch up and the Cabinet folks also, who are gonna need to be part of this discussion also.
I'm good for the most part. In the middle of September, as opposed to the end of January.
Well, the middle would be the fifteenth and sixteenth, Tuesday and Wednesday mornings, two back-to-back.
That can work.
The pack is one is on the fifteenth at night.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Because the next week's committee meetings.
Fifteenth and sixteenth, that ain't work at all.
I'm good with those two.
Do I? Start toward fifteenth and sixteenth.
We're gonna shoot for the fifteenth and sixteenth. And you'll give us the details and give us driving directions.
We'll have it here, we're at here.
Here, I will get with the Board Chair, Vice Chair, and we'll line up the details, get that to you, and decide if we're going to get the School Board Association in one time or two times to lead the first part of the discussion, or if we would like to do it ourselves and look at some goals of what we would like to do. I will put together some of the information, fact-finding, goal-setting for us, and I'm talking about me and my primary staff, and then at the same time, talk with the Chair and the Vice Chair about some goals that, and with you individually, about goals that you would like to see us arrive at also.
Well, and I think that one agenda item, and we might be getting ahead of ourselves, but because you were talking about goal-setting, and I'll keep in mind that, you know, the Board has statutory obligations for updates of plans and everything. We need to put all that stuff, you know, kind of in a Board calendar, so that we can begin to envision how our year is going to be spent. So, I mean, Jill has started doing that. I think we should probably get to where we do it a lot more frequently, because there's a lot of things that we have to do that can slip up on you, you know.
And keep in mind, it's September. We hope that those noble people up in Raleigh will have their mind made up on the budget.
Good thought.
I mean, because that really, it will have an impact on us, as to how we're gonna proceed.
Very much so.
September's awful late, but you would hope that they would have their mind made up. But, who knows? Fortunately for me, I don't have to look at dates, so you all make the decision. Upon retirement, I can do as I please. Tongue-in-cheek, no.
Cross the boundary on that. I can tell you're a swit.
Yeah, that's a good point.
All right. If there's no other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Before we go in-
The closed session, and the motion is made. I would like to introduce our new Human Relations, Executive Director for Human Relations. We had a reception for him previously, but he's here tonight to get his feet wet and close session. I figured this would be the appropriate time to introduce you, Dr. Jerry Oats, who is a member of our community, lives in Leland. And we look for some really good things out of Dr. Oats and his leadership and help with all of us. The one thing that I will tell you that the very first, in checking his references, the very first thing that James McAdams said was that, "Don't try to outdress him." And he has proven that to us already.
That's the end of it, when we finish that.
That's true, but Dr. Oats, we are glad that you're here, and this is our Board. They're fun to work with. They're aggravating to work with sometimes.
That would be me.
But, we, they really do care about children, which is your number-one aim in life, your passion in life, as you expressed this morning in our retreat with the Principals and the Assistant Principals. We're glad you're here. I'm glad you're here.
Welcome. All right.
In a closed session for attorney-client privilege and to consider confidential personnel matters.
All right. Favor? All right. No? All right. I've had it.